Good afternoon, we're going to get started. I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. This is the fourth of five public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for renewal leases for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units subject to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing between October 1, 2017 through September 30, 2018. I will now take roll call. Please respond if present. Hillary Botin.
Present.
Harvey Epstein.
Present.
Sheila Garcia.
Present.
Cecilia Hossa.
David Reese.
Present.
Helen Schaub is absent. Mary Seraphy.
Present.
And Scott Walsh, not present. Kathleen Roberts, I'm here. Let the record show that we have a quorum. The next meeting of this board will be a public hearing on Monday, June 19 that will be held at St. Francis College Founder's Hall, 180 Remsen Street in Brooklyn. The hearing is scheduled to run from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Spanish interpretation will be provided. Directions to this hearing can be found on our website, nycrgb.org, in the About Us section, Meeting Schedule. You can sign up to speak by calling the Rent Guidelines Board offices at (212) 669-7480, then press zero to register. There are copies of our meeting schedule here today. The final vote will take place on June 27, starting at 7:00 p.m. It will be held at Baruch College, Mason Hall, 17 Lexington Avenue, corner of 23rd Street in Manhattan. To board members, please note that drafts of both the hotel and apartment explanatory statements are in your folders. We request your comments on and/or suggested additions to the statements. No later than the morning of June 23, revised drafts will be sent to you via email by Tuesday, June 20, reflecting additions resulting from the public hearings. Any questions, please see Andrew. If you are interested in receiving emails regarding future Rent Guidelines Board public meetings and hearings, please see the RGB staff at the registration desk. Before we begin our hearing, I'd like to read some of the rules and parameters for those who are testifying before the board. Each speaker will have two minutes to give his or her testimony. In the event that large numbers of people wish to speak, the chair reserves the right to reduce the allotted speaking time. The clock will beep once when the speaker has 30 seconds left. I will attempt to alternate speakers between tenants and owners, but this may not always be possible. Speakers must confirm their presence with the RGB staff at the registration table located near the entrance of the hall. Speakers will not be called if they have not checked in at the registration table. There are Spanish and Mandarin interpreters here today. Actually, at the moment, we have just a Spanish interpreter. The Mandarin interpreter is on his way, I believe. When registering to speak, please notify the staff if you would like an interpreter. I will try to call several names in advance. If your name is called, it's advisable that you move to the front of the auditorium. If you have materials to distribute to the board, you should give them to the RGB staff sitting at the sign-in table near the entrance. And we ask that you please try to stay within your allotted time so we can get through as many speakers as possible. So at this point, I'd like to ask our interpreter to read the announcements in Spanish, please.
Estos son anuncios para este día, 14 de junio, para esta audiencia pública. Me gustaría darles la bienvenida a esta audiencia de la Junta de Regulaciones de Alquiler. Esta es la cuarta junta de las cinco juntas donde estamos considerando comentarios para hacer ajustes para la renovación de contratos para apartamentos, lofts, hoteles, y viviendas con unidades que tienen renta estabilizada desde el 1969 y la Acta para la Protección de Emergencia de 1974. Estos ajustes van a impactar a contratos que empezaron del 1er de octubre de 2017 hasta el 30 de septiembre de 2018. Ahora voy a tomar la existencia. Hillary Botin, Harvey Epstein, Sheila Garcia, Cecilia Hossa, David Reese, Helen Schaub, Mary Seraphy, Scott Walsh, Kathleen Roberts. Y tenemos quorum en esta reunión. La próxima reunión de la junta va a ser el 19 de junio y será en el Colegio St. Francis en el cuarto Founder's Hall en la 180 Kyre Remsen in Brooklyn. La audiencia está programada de las 5 para las 8 de la noche y se va a proveer interpretación al español. Las direcciones para la audiencia se pueden encontrar en el sitio de red, nycrgb.org, en la sección sobre la junta. Ahí también se va a ver la programación de la reunión y se pueden inscribir también por llamando al 212-669-7480, o prime en el cero, para inscribirse. Y también hay copias de nuestra programación de las audiencias hoy. El voto final se llevará a cabo el 27 de junio, empezando a las 7 de la noche. Será en la Universidad de Baruch, en Mason Hall, en la 17 Lexington Avenue, en la esquina de la calle 23, en Manhattan. Si les interesa recibir correos electrónicos en el futuro de la junta, pueden inscribirse y pueden hablar con el personal de la junta que están al frente registrando las personas. Antes de empezar la audiencia, me gustaría leer algunas de las pautas y parámetros para testificar o dar su testimonio hoy enfrente de la junta. Cada persona se le dará dos minutos para dar su testimonio. En el evento de que tenemos muchas personas que desean hablar, la presidenta o el presidente reserva el derecho de reducir el tiempo que se le da a las personas para dar su testimonio y va a sonar una alarma cuando solamente tienen 30 segundos. Voy a tratar de alternar las personas que van a dar testimonio entre los dueños y los inquilinos, pero esto no va a ser posible cada vez. Los que van a dar testimonio tienen que avisar su presencia a la junta, al personal de la junta cuando se están inscribiendo, y la inscripción está a la entrada. Cada persona que va a dar testimonio se le va a llamar. No se le va a llamar a las personas que no se han registrado a la mesa. Hay interpretación al español y también mandarín, pero ahorita solo estoy yo. El de mandarín está en camino. Cuando se registran en la mesa, por favor avisen si necesitan interpretación. Yo llamaré los nombres por avanzado. Si llamo su nombre, les aconsejamos que vengan al frente del auditorio. Si tienen materiales que distribuir a la junta, se lo deberían de dar a las personas a la entrada. Y les pedimos que, por favor, usen el tiempo que se les da, así todas las personas o en cuantas personas pueden hablar lo más posible. Gracias.
All right, the first three speakers will be Anita Rahm, Patrick Sikhanoffi, and Kathleen Wakem. So first Anita Rahm.
Anita, do you want a mic?
Do you want to put in a mic too? Okay. Get up now.
Okay.
We have a wireless mic. Over there.
Okay.
My name is Anita Rahm. I am the songwriter for Metropolitan Council on Housing. I've been speaking before you for 23 years, and most of the time under Ed Hochman, Marvin Markup, and Johnny Kimmel. There were tremendous rent increases which were not justified by the facts. I have read your reports, and you can atone for the sins that have passed by voting rent roll back. On page four of the Income and Affordability Study, you said that we had a high rate of inflation in the previous year. Page eight of that study, half of all households pay more than 33.6% of their income in gross rent. Page 12, 32.9% of rental households pay more than 50% of their income on gross rent, and 14% of low-income residents lost jobs or had hours' wages and tips reduced. On page 14, overall homelessness rates increased 28%. Income and expense study, this is the 11th consecutive year that the net operating income increased, on page three. The net operating income increased by 10% in 2015, on page 14. If rates go up, people will be less able to buy goods and services, and the city's economy will suffer. Wait till you stagnate, but landlords are getting good incomes despite some increase in expenses. A rent rollback will help the city's economy. Please help save endangered species, rent-stabilized tenants, and vote for a rent rollback. Let's say fair Mondaria. East side, west side, all around the town, the rents are going way up while our incomes are going down. Boys and girls together, me and Mamie over walk, we don't want to have to be sleeping on the sidewalk of New York. [applause] I'm going to win now. Have to get back to my husband.
Anita!
And then it's a printout on here nasty, two of them a few years ago.
Okay. I'm the Executive Director of the Community Housing Improvement Program, or CHIP. CHIP represents 4,000 rental buildings in the city. We provide, our members provide, over 400,000 units of housing, and most of that housing is rent-regulated. I'd like to focus on the income and expense analysis. We believe it's fundamentally an error. The Rent Guidelines Board relies on the INE report to demonstrate the financial health of the industry, but yet we believe it's an error. First of all, the RGB's analysis of building finances recognizes rental revenue from capital projects, MCI's and so forth. They fail to recognize capital expenses. This is a severe misstatement of a building's finances. Revenues are overstated, expenses are understated. Either capital items should be fully recognized, both as to costs and revenue, or they should not be recognized as to either. Otherwise, the conclusions of the INE are misleading, as we believe they are. Second, the RGB asserts that net operating income is a good indicator of a building's financial condition. It is not. It's used in the RGB's discussions and the reports as if it meant profit, but it's not profit. It excludes capital expenses, it excludes debt service and other charges. As such, it's insufficient to form a conclusion. If the goal is to understand the industry's financial performance in considering a guideline, then other measures are needed, and what is appropriate is income after capital expenses and debt service. Capital expenses are not discretionary and must be paid, they're an intrinsic part, and they should be included. Third, by attempting to hold NOI constant, RGB is confiscating revenues from unregulated apartments and stores. There's no statutory authority to do this. We've made this argument over the years, and the practice continues. We'd welcome a meeting with you to discuss this serious matter. And I have one more point I want to make, I see I'm almost out of time, but we think that it's unfair that the rent subsidies to the tenants are not counted in assessing rent burden, so I just want to make that point. Thank you for your time.
Oh, we have some questions.
Hi, I'm, I think I'm supposed to be on the mic. So I just wanted to ask some follow-up questions about your points. So your first point, that the RGB fails to recognize capital expenses, how would you recommend that that be achieved?
Well, as I say in here, and you'll have a copy of it, we think that you should recognize both the capital expense and the capital income.
So I'm just asking practically, where would we get that information?
You know, it's a very good question, and it's very easily available to you because there's a public agency, the DHCR, which collects that data for you. And you already have a direct data collection relationship with DHCR, and you can get that there.
Okay, thank you. And then you said that your second point was that superior measure than NOI was income after capital expenses and debt service, and where would you recommend that we look for that information?
Well, the capital expenses we just talked about and debt service, you can get, there are any one of several ways to get, and rather than take the time here to assess, you know, data collection techniques, I mean, there are several available to you, and we can talk about that, I'm happy to talk at a staff level on how to do that, but that information is also publicly available because it's all recorded.
If you could submit that information to the staff, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Could I just follow up on that, if possible? What HCR has is general, owners spend $300 million and apply for MCI's. We don't know what, I mean, that's a general information of what owners submitted. How would you use that, then, as a data source?
Well, very easily, and again, it takes a dive into the numbers, and I'm happy to do that with the staff, but basically DHCR has the data, building by building, and year by year. So the data is available in incredibly precise detail. I mean, the number you suggested is, you know, 300 million, if only. I mean, that would be, you know, that's an aggregate kind of number, I think you're suggesting, but they have detailed number by building.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Do you want to go first, or you?
Yeah, I think the best way that we collect data is from owners, and if owners open their books and talked about their income and expense, let me just finish. So if owners actually opened their books and said, hey, this is what our income is, these are what our expenses are, this is what our debt service is, that would be the best gauge of information.
But Harvey, they do that already, and you collect it and you use it.
But we don't, owners don't open their books. What they do is self-report income and expense data, which you've now said is inaccurate.
No, I did not say that. I did not say that. I did not say that, Harvey, don't do that. I said it's insufficient because it doesn't collect all of the information. And all of the information that should be collected is publicly available, it's, don't do this, it's all publicly available, it's all either at the DHCR or filed because there's a mortgage. All of that is publicly available. And when you say, oh, they don't report, it's public record. What are you talking about? It's not reported. It is reported.
So you're saying, I use the word inaccurate, and you said insufficient, so you're parsing that out, so I can hear that. But I guess my point is, hold on, let me finish.
Well, I'm glad you do.
I didn't interrupt you. I did not interrupt you. What I'm trying to get at is the most accurate bit of information that we can all then rely on to say, these are actual expenses, this is actual income, and then we can all collectively say this is, we think, the most accurate information. And what the board is trying to do is get that information. And if something's in exclusive control of a party.
And it's not.
Hold on, and if that party hasn't been sharing it publicly, they don't say what their debt service is, they don't say what their expenses are. The way to get there is to make it accurately exposed and public. So my point here is, well, you're going to argue that this is wrong and this is wrong, the best way to get that is a way that I think you don't want to do, and that's what I'm trying to get at.
No, actually, you see, no, it doesn't work that way. All of this stuff is available. DHCR has all of the capital expenses on file there, and it's already there. It's already there for you to look at. It's, and you know, this is not the first time I've made this suggestion, this is about 10 years old. It's all been there, you could have looked every one of those 10 years for what that data is, and you've chosen, you've chosen not to look at it. But I think there's a hopeful point, and I don't want to be critical, I think there's a hopeful point in what you're saying, because I think the underlying premise in your statement is that you do think it would be stronger if you could survey that kind of information and then you could actually report what people, you know, the more difficult strengths that owners find themselves in, so I appreciate that.
And I think we don't want any owner to fail, but like, if an owner borrowed, does $100 million worth of work, $100,000 worth of work, we have no idea what they've borrowed, we have no idea what they paid out of reserve. There's no information that HCR has that gives that information, and what we're trying to do is then not let owner fail, but don't overcompensate owners like we've been doing for decades.
Well, when you say owner compensate.
Hold on, let me finish. Don't continue to overcompensate owners like we've been doing for decades because owners keep saying, they come in saying, we're in poverty, but don't have any data to support that because we have no accurate information. Because you say it's inaccurate, and then other people say it's inaccurate, and then we're all guestimating on what's accurate.
So you let go of a very interesting point there when you said overcompensate, and that leads into a different point, which I think is important, because how can you be overcompensating when you don't give the industry the piec? So the piec is out there, and you come up with a piec, and it, you know, every, and this is not just this year, but, you know, throughout the years as a trend, you come out with a piec and it's some number, 6%. And then, and that's the number that you collectively have determined is real. And then you say, yeah, but you know what, I'm not going to give you that. Now, that goes back to your statutory mandate. Your statutory mandate is a very specific one, and it says that you're here to prevent, and the law is there to prevent unwarranted, unwarranted increases. Now, how can it be unwarranted if you yourself, a government body, have determined that the piec is real, it actually occurs? And so for you to cut back the piec, says I'm going to take a real number and I'm going to substitute a fake number for it. That's what it says. And that's where I think that takes you.
So I think you're missing, can I just say this one point? You're missing the point. I think the point is, just because the change of a price is reflected in the piec, doesn't mean that's an actual change in the cost for an owner. And for example, if the price of paper goes up by 5%, but your usage of paper goes down by 10%, you don't have an increased cost. You have a decrease in cost even though the price of paper went up, or the price of fuel went up if your usage goes down. So the goal here is to not overcompensate and just use the piec, which is one example. For example, the piec in 2014, I think, was 5.7, but when we looked at actual income and expense data, expenses only went up by 1%.
Ah, this is good.
So if you only, if the expenses only went up by 1% based on the income expense data, which you think is somewhat okay, then.
No, which I think is unokay. That's what I, that's what I've just been saying about, it's not okay.
We just need to really look at what the real change in costs are for owners, balancing that out against the interest of tenants and maintain affordability. And that's our responsibility, not to blindly use the piec as a tool.
Well, no. So, you know, certainly, I'd love to, you know, you were talking about wanting to see data, I'd love to see that data that shows that owners are using 10% less paper, but I think the point is that the piec fails in another way, because, you know, it takes a static basket of goods, and what it doesn't do is when new mandates are piled on to owners, it doesn't value that at anything other than zero. So that what happens is, you know, so paper may have gone up, to use your example, 3%, but by the way, in addition to that, you've got to do all these other things which you never had to do before. You know, we did an interesting survey of the number of mandates coming out of the city council over the last several years, and we looked at, and I can't quote from memory the exact numbers, but, you know, if you look at five years ago, there were a handful of regulatory requirements coming out of the city council. And every year it's gone up, and the actual curve of what it is, is that last year there was some 35, again, this is just from memory, some 35 new proposals that came out that owners have to do to run their buildings. And we're not saying whether any one of those proposals is good or bad, a lot of them are meritorious. The point is that every one of those has a cost associated with it for which you give a zero.
I think we have a question from another member of the panel, Helen?
Yes. Oh, I was kind of enjoying this one, but.
Yeah, I actually, I think we should mostly move on, but I just wanted to, Harvey alluded to it, but I just want to confirm that it is also your understanding that HCR only has what owners submit as the cost of their improvements, it doesn't have data regarding the source of the capital for those improvements, whether it was a loan or.
Right, 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 but it does have, it has the capital expense, which is a crucial part of what we're discussing.
Okay, so we don't have a disagreement on that point. And the only other thing I would just say is that I do think you mischaracterize our understanding of NOI. I think we understand what NOI is, we understand the difference between NOI and profit.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
Kathleen Wakem.
Kathy Wakem, rent-stabilized tenant, Metropolitan Council on Housing. As a rent-stabilized tenant who has lived in the same East Village apartment for more than 40 years, I have seen predatory equity in action. In 1971, 325 East 12th Street was bought for $58,000 by Morton Tabak. Then in 2012, Tabak's family inherited the property. Three years later, they sold the building to Rafael Toledo for $6.5 million. He was financed by Madison Capital, a hedge fund and Signature Bank. This year, another Realtor, David Goldfasser, took over Toledo's debt. The intricacies of these transactions are being investigated by the Attorney General. Throughout Toledo's involvement, tenants were subjected to hazardous and illegal deconstruction of apartments, frivolous lawsuits such as succession rights and primary domicile, aggressive buyouts, decrease in services such as no cooking gas since May 2016, irregular heat and hot water, and having one superintendent for 15 buildings. New York City law states that a 24-hour super must either live in the building or within 200 feet, approximately one city block. At present, Madison Capital is managing the building under the auspices of Silverstone Property Group. It is the predatory loan-to-own business model. The Attorney General has stated that this hedge fund issues over-secured credit so that the accrued interest and fees are impossible to pay. This is done with the intention of managing the building with the intent to sell. This is a typical example of the enmeshment of hedge funds and Realtors into the housing market, which is contributing to continued homelessness. This year, 43% of homeless people were rent-stabilized tenants. We do not need shelters, we need truly affordable housing and stronger rent regulation. Also, 73% of low-income New Yorkers pay half their income for rent. Since 1994, approximately 200,000 rent-stabilized apartments have been taken from the rent regulation system. No new apartments have been built to accommodate the serious loss. Since 2014, no landlord has opened books to apply for a hardship increase. A hardship increase is when a landlord is not making over 5% profit and must open the books to prove it. Landlord's net operating income grew by 10.8% this year. Most tenants did not receive such an increase in wages or other income.
Excuse me, your time is up. Can you wind up your presentation, please?
Yes. In New York City, we are experiencing an urgent housing crisis. Please do not let tenants be priced out of their homes and neighborhoods. Please vote for a rent freeze. Hedge funds and their collaborators do not deserve rent increases. And David, in your report to the Attorney General about this particular building, you have deemed these transactions as illegal, so why give them a rent increase? Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Jack Freund, Richard Steiger, and Ann Korchak.
Jack Freund, representing the Rent Stabilization Association. You should all have copies of our testimony. I'm not going to have time to read it, and, but I hope you will. We have also previously submitted an addendum to our submission which attacks this notion of overcompensation. I think that should be a dead horse, as Pat indicated. indicated, but the legend lives on. But owners have clearly not been overcompensated. And in the area of profitability, we have also addressed that issue. We do not think this is an area that this board can be involved in, because you just have no idea how to determine profitability. And the rent stabilization system was set up specifically to take profitability out of the equation. What I would like to address very briefly is what I think your main concern here is, and that is tenants. You're obviously not concerned with the interests of owners. I understand that. That is not why you were appointed. You were appointed to protect the interests of tenants. And that translates into just keeping rents low. But you know that you have evidence before, you provided by the staff, that rent burdens are not a function of high rents. They are a function of low incomes. And the way to address that is for this board to enact the resolution calling on Mayor de Blasio to support legislation that we have supported, both in the Senate and the Assembly, that would provide permanent rent relief for tenants. Not temporary rent freezes that are not sustainable in the long term, but permanent rent relief to tenants who are income-eligible, that are needy, not across-the-board rent increases regardless of income. And we know we have high-income tenants living in rent stabilized apartments. So I would just ask you, in closing, to, to bear in mind, and I know you must be aware of the fact that real estate, if nothing else goes up, real estate taxes go up every year, and they go up severely. Just to pay for the increase in real estate taxes requires a 2% increase in rents each year. If you do not provide owners with those necessary increases, at least those minimal increases to cover their increase in real estate taxes, your constituency, renters, will suffer. It has consequences. When you choke off the bloodline to rental property owners, it's going to have consequences. Either they're not going to be able to maintain their buildings, or they're going to decide to throw in the towel, walk away, and turn it over to short-term flippers, speculators, who are, I don't think you want to encourage that. I think you want to encourage the long-term owners of affordable housing in this city that we have in place. Thank you very much. We'll hope you take this into consideration and pass a somewhat more reasonable guideline, understanding that your range is unreasonable to us and inadequate, but we hope you come off the bottom of that range.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Freund?
I have a question.
Yeah, Ms. Sarafi.
Thank you. One of the major topics we're hearing at all these public meetings is MCIs and preferential rent, and how we should take that into account. But taking that into account will affect the rent increases for all landlords, even those that do not charge MCIs or preferential. How would you comment on that?
Yeah, well, you make a very good point, Mary. I mean, the, despite the emphasis on MCIs, and that does seem to be the theme of the year here, MCIs in 2016 accounted for only 1,200-odd applications added to 45,000 rent stabilized buildings. 1,231, I believe, got approved MCI rent increases. The total value of MCI increases is just over 200 million, which sounds like a lot of money, but in the context of the total rent roll of the stabilized universe, it's a pittance. It doesn't make a difference, except for those few buildings that do benefit from MCI rent increases. And we must remember that you cannot substitute an MCI rent increase for a maintenance and operating rent increase. The rent increases that are granted, and these are all reviewed, chopped down in some cases by DHCR, so that owners are getting less than they applied for. And, and then that rent increase that results, to the extent that it's collectible, in some cases, it's not even collectible for market-rate tenants, that is dedicated to repaying the money, regardless of whether that money came from a loan that the owner had to finance, whether the owner had built up reserves, that is capital placed at risk. The board will tell you, that's the real way to judge profitability, not by some average number, but by an individualized, I think the term is, individualized assessment of capital placed at risk. You cannot do profits across the board. It just has no meaning. You cannot do profits when you mix in a 300-unit 421A building in Manhattan, a six-unit brownstone in Brooklyn, they have nothing in common. You cannot meld those and, and talk about profitability. So MCIs have really nothing to do with this issue. And, you know, I'll just add to that. The suggestion that preferential rents somehow should play into this, that you can eliminate the need for a rent increase because owners can take, can increase their preferential rents, is, is really a ludicrous notion. And I hope you understand that if preferential rents are 30% of the total, they are market rents. It is difficult to increase those rents. By definition, they are market rents. It's what you can collect. An owner tries to raise a preferential rent, he risks losing a tenant. Okay? So there's a very limited ability to raise preferential rents. And what about the other 70% of stabilized tenants that don't have preferential rents? They have below-market rents. Is the suggestion really that you want to give those tenants an even bigger break, not increase their rent, which are already below-market rents, and pile the total cost of increased real estate taxes and other costs on preferential rent tenants, who tend to be low-income and have low rents? I don't think that's the way you want to go. So I think both of those suggestions, that MCIs and preferential rent increases can somehow substitute for a necessary across-the-board rent increase, are just laughable.
Any other questions for Mr. Freund? Yes, we have another question.
Mr. Freund, I have two questions. One is, you say that we can't compare the operations of a brownstone in a large apartment building, but we have a very blunt tool where we can really only change two, two things, the one-year and the two-year rent increase. Why can't we compare those? You know, when you, when you reduce it to kind of their cash flow, why aren't they comparable?
They're just two different animals. I, it's beyond just comparing those two instances. What I'm really getting at here is this notion of a single number. When the board tells you that what profit, the way to determine profit, when the RGB staff income and expense report says, "The way to determine profit is an individualized examination of capital placed at risk." That means you look at a building. It doesn't mean you add up all the units together and get an average, because that doesn't tell you anything.
But just to be clear, that same logic would apply to comparing two large buildings or two small buildings? I mean, what you're just saying is that?
Yes. Well, let me get even more precise about this, since you asked, and I think you're interested, David. But going back historically, we did have a system that regulated profits. It was called the Rent Control System. That system had a formula that had a profit component built into it. It failed miserably. It was, it was impossible to implement the system where they understood the only way we can do this is building by building. If we're going to look at profit, a profit, one, one, one building is not a profit for another building, and we have to do it individually, and that's why that system collapsed. That's why purposely, the rent stabilization system does not talk about profit. Nowhere in your mandate does it talk about analyzing net operating income and the profitability of buildings. Why? Because it was recognized after 30 years of trying, it can't be done. So the fix for that was, we'll have a generalized system where we'll look at increased costs. And that's not a perfect system either. Nothing is a perfect system. You've got a million units spread over 45,000 buildings. There's, it's a very difficult task. But that's why you have rough justice. So if taxes go up by 6% or 7% or 8% a year, you pass along part of that, not all of it, because then you would be overcompensating, and you never have passed along more than. And let me just mention, you know, you get one example of a year in which the piec was higher than real expenditures. Well, there are a lot of other years in which real expenditures were higher than the piec. Okay? So that all balances out in the long term. And again, that is why I say we cannot look at profitability. That is something that you can only guess at, and it really doesn't make your decision any easier. What you do know is that costs do go up, principally among them, real estate taxes, which is the driving force of the increases in the piec. And we're urgently asking you this year, at least, to recognize that the increase in real property taxes is real. It affects everybody. And if owners are going to maintain their buildings, if they're going to maintain affordable housing for their tenants, they at least need to be able to pay for the taxes that fund city services. They at least be, you know, need to be able to maintain decent living conditions for their tenants. And so really, it's not so much on behalf of owners that we're asking, but it's on behalf of tenants. I think they should be here asking for a reasonable rent increase, so they can keep living in the apartments that they've been living in for 20, 30, and more years.
My second question relates to your comments about preferential rents, and, and you said that preferential rents can't be raised. So first of all, there's been a lot of anecdotal information in the press about rapidly gentrifying neighborhoods with large jumps. We've heard testimony by tenants about large jumps. Are there data sources that you could point us to that we have not looked at relating to preferential rents that would support your argument that preferential rents are not, not increasing as a general rule? Or what data can we look at to support your claim?
Sure. It's, it's a good question, David. We have looked at the rent registration data that we process on behalf of our owners to determine what the increase in preferential rents is. And our finding is that 95% of those preferential rents remain preferential from year to year.
Do you, do you measure the, do you measure if it goes up in the preferential band, or just whether it's preferential or not?
Well, finish the sentence.
I'm sorry.
I'll tell you. We have found that 95% of the rents do not go up more than 5%. So there is some flex, and the staff can, has access to more of that data than we do. And I, I think our findings are reflective of the entire universe, but the staff can certainly run that, that data for you. And I think that what you'll find is that preferential rents, by and large, remain preferential, and that the rent increases, where there are rent increases, and sometimes they don't increase, but where there are rent increases in the preferential range, it's less than 5%.
I would ask that you submit the RSA analysis on the preferential rents, if you could.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Freund?
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. Richard Steiger.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My wife and I are retired. We live in rent stabilized housing. We pay more than 50% of our pensions and social security towards rent. 30% of tenants pay more than 50% of their income for rent. Indeed, more than half of all New Yorkers spend more than a third of their income on rent. Maybe your guidelines need some guidance of their own, because they're not working for a vast majority of regulated tenants. We have record homelessness in New York City. 60,000 people are in shelters every night. There are 33,000 public school students living in homeless shelters, according to the city's Independent Budget Office. That is 4,000 more students than at any point during the previous academic year, an increase of 15%. Evictions are at an all-time high. Clearly, the board has a difficult, challenging, and some might say a thankless job, but it is a vitally important one. You can help reduce homelessness. The de Blasio administration has struggled to address the homelessness crisis, which has worsened in recent years as rents have climbed, federal and state aid has shrunk, and a state rental assistance program has ended. Much to your credit, the board instituted two years of rent freezes on one-year leases. Why did you stop this year? Why do public members, year after year, fail to vote for a rent rollback? Trying to balance the ledger? Afraid that you'll incur the wrath of the Rent Stabilization Association? The board spends countless hours researching and compiling statistics. Then you blithely, methodically ignore them and propose a range of rent increases that have no reasonable connection to your own research. It was the warmest winter on record. Your research shows owner income increased 4.4%, while owner expenses went up 1%. 57 cents of every dollar goes to run their apartments. And any landlord having financial difficulties can open his or her books and apply for a hardship increase. Tenants have no such option. Your proposed rent increases will lead to more homelessness, more evictions, and more students sleeping in shelters. If you want to err, err on the side of these vulnerable New Yorkers, not on the coddled owners. Millions of tenants rely on the board to fairly inequitably serve as a check and balance on ever-escalating rents. For too long, you've abdicated your responsibility, and the results have been catastrophic. I call on the board to countermand your proposals and rollback rents, or at the very least, institute a rent freeze on one- and two-year leases. Otherwise, this board will be contributing to an increase in the number of homeless people on the streets of New York City. Help reduce homelessness. Do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No, thank you very much. Ann Korchak.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Ann Korchak. The Korchak and Steiger families have been small property owners since the 1950s, when my husband's immigrant grandparents bought their first property on the website.
Can you speak up a little bit?
In the 60s, they purchased a second building on the same block. We now have a total of 20 apartments. Many of our tenants are in rent-regulated units and have occupied those apartments for decades. Long-term regulated tenants means a significant portion of our rent roll has seen no increase since 2014. In that time, we've seen our property taxes increase over 10%. In 2015, we spent over $100,000 to replace an old boiler and chimney. This year, we'll spend over $300,000 to replace the roof and repair facade on our century-old building. Any small profit we've made the past several years have been held in reserves to help pay for these major capital improvements. Contrary to the image the Rent Guidelines Board has of owners, our family is not getting rich as landlords, and the buildings are not our livelihood. I'm the only member of the family that works in the family business. Every other member of the family has a job. We continue to operate as landlords to honor the family members that helped build our family business. But to be honest, I don't know how much longer we can stay in business. The ever-increasing tax burden, the high water and sewer charges, the excessive sanitation fines and DOB filing fees make it very difficult for a small property owner to justify staying in business. I understand that the income and expense report you prepared shows a 10.8% increase in net operating income, but excludes buildings that contain fewer than 11 units. How can the board make decisions that affect my family business when the model you're using doesn't include my property type? These are the properties that include the vast majority of the city's rent stabilized housing stock, but yet your model does not reflect the small mom-and-pop owners. The Rent Guidelines Board was created to be, not to be a tenant advocate body only. You're required to balance the needs of both owners and tenants, and you can only do that if you vote to give owners a fair and justifiable increase. Thanks for your attention, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you. Let's see if we have any questions. Any questions?
Yeah, I just, thank you for testifying.
Sure.
So you said you have 20 apartments?
Yes.
And how many of them are stabilized?
We're about 50%, 10 of them.
10 are stabilized. Any of them rent-controlled?
Yes.
Of the 10, or in addition?
No, the two rent-controlled are included in the total regular.
So there's eight stabilized and two rent-controlled?
Correct, correct.
And the other 10 are market units?
Correct.
And you said you applied, you did a boiler?
We did. Yeah, we do have an MCI application in.
You do have an MCI?
Yeah, and, you know, we haven't, you know.
You're just waiting to hear.
We're hoping, yeah.
And then the same thing you're going to do for the roof, you're going to do an MCI?
Well, it is a major capital improvement. So yes, we would, we would put that application in.
And so you're talking about the small landlord issues in New York, and I appreciate you saying that.
Yeah.
Do you feel like small landlords have a unique situation in the housing market?
Yeah, I do. I do. I mean, you know, you know, you don't have, like, say, the buying power that a, you know, you know, an owner that's got thousands of units.
Right.
You know, our, you know, we only have 10 apartments per building, and like I said, many of our tenants are longtime tenants who've been with us for decades. So we don't have the rent turnover, so we're not getting vacancy increases and things like that. So yeah, I think that, you know, the issues that we face, you know, you can't always compare. It's not really apples to apples. Like, you know, if we have, like, a water main issue, you know, the, the main from the curb to the building is the same, you know, that, that cost is the same whether you're a building with, you know, 200 units or 10. So, right.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope. Okay, thank you.
I just have one clarification question. So you work full-time running the, running the business, but the rest of your family members have? So you work full-time running the business, but the rest of your family members have secondary jobs. So work that they do to run your buildings is a second job that they do when they get home from work?
Correct.
That's correct?
Correct. Okay, thank you again.
All right, thank you for your testimony. The next speakers are William Stanford, Hal Dorfman, and Kate Conroy.
Good afternoon.
The name is Mr. X. Where there are events, there are concerns. One year ago this month, I told Kathy it's unpractical to start these public hearings before six P.M., and she went against my wishes. I also did the same again this year. So my questions are, is she confused? Is she stuck or stupid, or is she just mentally retarded? Also, there should be four microphones in this auditorium. Top right corner, bottom right, bottom left, top left, that corner, well, all four corners, top left, top right, bottom right. You only have one. Okay, you should have one up there, one up there, and one down here. You don't. You picked a bad place to hold this public hearing. Bad time, bad place. I don't appreciate that. These tenants need a rollback. They need a rent freeze and a rollback. I'm safe because I have nonpublic section of fire, which is issued by the HPD. Therefore, the HPD, not the RGB, determines my fate. So you can, you know, decide how much we should pay, or you want, but you're not affecting me. But I can't speak for them. They need a rollback. I don't need a rollback. I got my rollback. Okay? Thanks to the current Rent Council Executive Director, well, let me rephrase that. The Rent Council Executive Director is the reason why we had to pass security checks, unwarranted security checks, and sent it to the last ten years. And by the way, he was also the reason why lately our client had to get a second job, had to get a second job because he underpaid him. Although he had more seniority than him, he was never the executive director, just in case you didn't know. Okay? If you hold public hearings, you should start them at or after six P.M., not before. Okay? Starting a public hearing at five P.M. is bad. Starting at two P.M. is worse, because then you got empty seats back there, which makes no sense. Really doesn't. And also, twenty-sixteen, your meeting schedule was updated on time and matter, and then again this year, that's also inexcusable. You need to get it together or throw in the towel like the gold of Alaskala, which was weighed different by Badland Masur Garden in nineteen eighty-three. I don't know what your problem is, but you do have a problem when it comes to starting public hearings before six P.M. and picking bad places to hold them. I don't know why they have to be held in a building, buildings that have magnometers like this one, like One Center Street. That's another concern I have. That's annoying, it really is. That nonsense has to stop.
Excuse me, your time is well over. Could you wind up your presentation, please?
I'm winding up now, but as I said before, you need to listen sometimes before you get smacked. You really do. You need to listen sometimes, because you're getting on my nerves. You really are.
I do want to say, I think we should just appreciate everyone has a different approach. We appreciate your comments, but I don't think taking it to another level is really appropriate. I don't, I mean, we can agree to disagree. I think later public hearings are really important, too, but I think, I think you just have to appreciate that she heard your opinion, and we should move on.
She didn't hear anything from me.
Hal Dorfman.
Could have some better lighting in here. My name is Hal Dorfman. I'm the owner of an eight-family rent-stabilized building in the Bronx. My property is a private building. It's not owned by a government agency or a housing authority or a charity. I purchased it three years ago to create a means so that my family and I would have retirement income. This board needs to grant a four-percent one-year increase and a six-percent two-year increase to allow small property owners, individual property owners, not to get rich, but to maintain a decent life, working their buildings. I have two issues for your attention. First, rising expense costs the last two years combined with no rent increases. And second, misusing the rent stabilization laws by unworthy tenants. My costs, oil was a hundred, was one dollar and forty-six cents a gallon in two thousand sixteen. This year, it was a dollar eighty-five, a thirty percent increase in my expenses. Property insurance, twenty-five hundred dollars in two thousand and fifteen, now four thousand dollars, a sixty percent increase. Real estate taxes, twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars in two thousand and fifteen, now twenty-nine nine, a twelve percent increase. My hardship, the unintended use of our laws in the city that I live in. My fourth-floor tenant pays eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars a month, owns a successful locksmith business just around the corner from my building, and employs ten people. The third-floor tenant directly underneath pays two thousand fifty-five dollars. Now she's on scree, and her rent is still below the market. This is a twelve-hundred-dollar unfair subsidy to him. Fair rent increases must be granted, including low-rent increases. This will give the message to tenants that the rent control lottery has to end, and it's only for persons who truly need it, as it was created after World War II. I strongly suggest four and six percent rent increases for this year to allow us to maintain our buildings habitably and to earn a moderate income. I thank you for your attention, and I appreciate your service truly on this board. If you have any questions for me, my name is Hal Dorfman.
Yes, we have a question for you, Mr. Dorfman.
Thank you.
So my question, you bought the building four years ago?
Three years ago.
Okay. And when you bought it, you got the rent roll from DHCR?
Yes, I did.
And what were, what expectation in, you know, getting your financing and projecting out, what was your, what expectation in terms of rent increases did you build in?
Historically, two and four percent.
So your expectation was that you were going to get two and four percent increases going forward?
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions for Mr. Dorfman? No, thank you for your testimony.